Good evening and welcome to the Cedar Falls City Council Committee of the Whole. I will now call this meeting to order. We have four items on the agenda for this evening. Library Board of Trustees interview, recycling facility update, floodplain ordinance review, and bills and payroll. Our first item on the agenda is an interview with Mr. Michael Slennick for the Library Board of Trustees. Mike, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, give us just a few words about yourself and then we'll have questions from council.
Mike Slennick, I've been with Richardson Funeral Home Downtown here for 25 years. Graduated from UNI. My wife works downtown at Viking IDEX Corporation. Kids all went to Lincoln Elementary School and in homes in high school now, so I guess I consider myself a lifelong resident here. Grew up in Sumner, and my mom was actually the director of the library up in Sumner, so I kind of grew up in the library situation quite a bit, so that was kind of my daycare center.
Thanks, Mike. Do we have questions from council members?
Mr. Slennick, can you speak to a time within the board since you've had some experience with it where you've disagreed with maybe the majority opinion? And what that entailed?
Of course, you try to have different committees broken down, so of course we have finance and stuff that a lot of times before it's brought to the board, it's been discussed and everything, so there's times where we've tabled things for further suggestions and ideas, but as far as disagreeing with them, I mean, for the most part, it's a pretty cohesive group of people and all come from kind of the same idea and background as far as the library and how it should be operated, so I guess really to answer your question, I haven't really had a major time where I've disagreed with them.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any program or any initiatives that you'd like to see the library undertake in the next few years?
I know we've discussed before about sharing some programming with the Hearst Center and stuff and kind of, and I think some of the technology things, I think, for cameras and stuff, I think we're talking about sharing a server and stuff, so yes, trying to not bear all the expense within one place if you can kind of spread it around to kind of help save money. So those would be some of the things that we've talked about.
Thanks.
Other questions from council? Seeing done, a vote for Mr. Slennick's appointment will be on the council agenda for July 16th. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate your service.
Thanks for stepping up.
Our second agenda item is a recycling facilities update, and we have Public Works and Parks Manager Brian Heath.
Thank you, Mayor Protan Blanford and City Council. This evening, I'd like to give you an update on our recycling operations and namely our public works facility where we do a lot of our work there, but also this evening, I'd like to split my time with our Waste Track education team, part of the Black Hawk County Solid Waste Management Commission education team. Tammy Turner and Lindsay Anderson will be sharing time with me this evening, and I think it will be important to point out some of the important jobs and educational programs that they offer. But we'll get started with a recap of our recycling operations. The recycling operations are part of the refuse section of the Public Works and Parks Division. Doyle Smith is the supervisor of that section. He was unable to be with us this evening, so I'm going to fill in here for him the best possible. I want to start by kind of covering the different types of recycling and how we manage our recyclables. There's three main types of recycling that the industry is kind of standardized with. The first is the drop site recycling, and that is the method that the city of Cedar Falls uses. The second type of recycling is curb side sort, and that's a method of collection where they actually sort the materials at the curb with a separate collection vehicle, and they put them in compartmentized units and manage them that way. They all end up going to a material recovery facility, same with single stream recycling. Single stream is probably the most popular type of recycling that's out there. That's the method of one can, one dump into a single stream where it goes to a sort facility and is separated in that manner. Probably the easiest for both the collector as well as the resident who's trying to do the recycling, however, it's probably the most difficult to manage in terms of contamination. Some of the environmental impacts that we see with both the curb side sort as well as the single stream recycling is the environment holistically. Our philosophy is that consideration should be given not only to landfill reduction but holistic, holistically to the environment. That includes fossil fuel consumption. Anytime you're out there collecting recyclables separate of your solid waste, you're going to be using another vehicle, you're going to be using an additional vehicle. In our case, we use three vehicles to collect our solid waste, and it would probably take three vehicles if we were in a curb side situation to collect the recyclables. That takes a lot of extra fossil fuels, there are a lot of air pollution there, the equipment maintenance, you're using petroleum's for oils and lubrications, hydraulic fluids in these trucks, so you're compounding the amount of impact that you have on the environment. And also the quality of recyclables. When you're doing a curb side sort, you're not getting a good separation method. It goes to a material recovery facility, and that's where there's a lot of troubles that are taking place in the industry today. Our household recycling, we use destination based sites. We have four major sites. That's our main site on 16th Street. We also have the UNI facility, Green Hill Village, and Fairway. Couple of these, the Fairway namely, is on private property, and we're at the mercy of that business to allow us to have that, the drop sites there. Green Hill Village, we're looking at a CIP expansion for that facility in FY19 here, so we'll be adding to that to accept more recyclables this fiscal year. That facility has probably outpaced the other two in the last two fiscal years in terms of volume, so we're seeing a lot more material being dropped off at the Green Hill Village site. Then, of course, our main site also includes a material recovery facility, which is very unique to a municipality of this size. Typically, you won't find a municipality that has its own recovery facility. What that is, is where we're able to go in and separate all the materials ourselves and make sure that we're getting good quality products. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we go on. Mill grade bales, that's probably the key in the industry today in terms of making sure that the recyclables that are collected are being recycled and not being rejected and sent back to landfills or being rejected and taken back to sort facilities to be rebaled, basically, resorted, rebailed. We have complete control over that. We bring all of our materials in from the remote sites. They come into our mini Murfs that we call it. We're able to sort the cardboard, the newsprint, all the items, and bail everything with the exception of glass, of course, and we have a good program for glass that I'll discuss more here in a little bit. But if you see the pictures there, we've got mill grade bales that we're able to produce. They go into a docked trailer at our facility, part of our expansion project that took place a few years ago, and that material is ready to go to the mills. The only thing they have to do is sort it according to the product, and then it goes off to the destination of recycling. We do that with our cardboard, we do that with all of our fibers, our cardboard, our newsprint, our office paper, and as well our plastic, and I believe that's all of those that go that way. The tin, now we bale that, but it goes to a local scrap metal recycler locally here, so that's kind of separate from the other household materials, but we're still getting a good quality product that's not contaminated and recycled. Some of our new markets, some of our expansion, we've done this for a few years now, is styrofoam. We're one of the few communities or entities that actually densifies styrofoam. Like I said, we've been doing that for several years. Some of the market for this is lighter weight plastics. They can pelletize it and turn it back into styrofoam, but once that styrofoam's densified, it's like a 90 to 1 ratio for densifying, and it turns into basically a hard block, and it's almost like a hard glass. So it really densifies down, and that's been a very good program for us to get into. It's not only helped the residents having an outlet for that type of material, but it's also helped us when this material comes in in cardboard boxes, et cetera, we can easily separate that material out and get it in over to the densifier side of things. So that works really well for us. Some of the other programs that we're doing, and this is one I'm quite proud of myself, we started recycling shingles, asphalt shingles, and this is probably one of the largest reductions that we have in the waste stream is separating shingles out of the waste stream. All asphalt shingles that come into us get recycled. We don't accept anything that goes to landfill. If somebody has a contaminated load, they either get surcharged for it or they're rejected and they take it out to the landfill. The material is then collected, we grind that material to a gradation that is DOT acceptable, and then it's sold off to a local asphalt company to be used in an admix for asphalt paving. So that alone, the amount of diversion that we've had with our recycling of asphalt shingles is huge. Other items that we're dealing with that we're recycling, I mentioned glass earlier. We've been working with a local vendor, a business in Cedar Falls, to recycle their glass for them, and we've really helped them with a large problem that they had with getting rid of or recycling large quantities of glass. We partner with Ripple Glass out of Kansas City, Missouri. They'll spot a trailer for us on occasion. Whenever we order a trailer, they'll come and collect that material, and then it goes down Ripple, and our quantities have gotten to the point now, since we're collecting all types of glass, colored, clear, all types of glass, we're now actually receiving a commodity off of our glass. Other items, tires, appliances, some of these things have been banned from the landfill for several years. Early '90s, I believe, is when that was mandated for yard waste and tires and appliances, so we've been separating them from the waste stream for several years now. Tires, they're typically taken and shredded and used either for landfill liner or for other recyclable products of that nature. Appliances, of course, get demanufactured, all the freons get taken out of refrigerators and anything that's cold type unit, and also any mercury switches, things like that, get taken out, and then they get scrap metal recycled. We also collect regular scrap metal, which goes to alter trading, and we get a fairly good commodity out of that. Our diversion rates for FY17, I don't have FY18 numbers yet, but our numbers for FY17 are, as you see on the screen, we're right about 18 and 1/2 percent as far as an overall diversion rate. That includes all of our household recyclables, styrofoam, asphalt shingles, appliances, glass, tires, electronics. Our electronics, we collect separately as well as work with the Solid Waste Commission. The Solid Waste Commission does two programs a year, one in Waterloo and one in Cedar Falls, to collect not only electronics but household hazardous waste, and the Waste Track team will talk a little bit more about that when they show their presentation. So we're looking at like almost 19 percent diversion rate. That number will go up. As you can see, our asphalt shingles for FY17 was fairly low, only 395 tons. Since then, we've had a lot of roofing jobs come in that were the result of a hailstorm that took place a couple of years ago. Took a little while for the insurance companies to catch up, and now we've got well over 2,000 tons of shingles that have been recycled. Just trying to recap some of the household or some of the recycling options that we provide here. Household recycling, we take all types of fibers, tin, glass, plastics. Redeemable containers, we've collected since FY09, nearly $40,000 of redeemable containers, and what that money is used for is it helps offset subsidies for youth programs at the rec center. So we're pretty happy to be able to work with the Cedar Falls Recreation Center and help offset them costs for them youth programs. Styrofoam, I mentioned, has been fairly successful. As a matter of fact, with styrofoam, we're also working with the city of Waverly. We take all of their styrofoam right now and densify that material, and so we're kind of partnering with them on that program. Asphalt shingles, I mentioned, we were right at 2,800 tons since 2014. We take scrap metal, tires, electronics. We do rechargeable batteries. We got a program called Call to Recycle where we take all types of NiCad batteries like you have in your rechargeable drills and things like that. Use motor oil and waste vegetable oil, kind of round out our program. Some of the revenues, you can see this fluctuates quite a bit, and the market is the same. It fluctuates quite a bit based on several different factors. If you see in FY12, we were nearly $118,000 for our 1,700 tons, and then you can see we had quite a decline there for a few years, and now FY17, not only our tonnage went back up, but also our commodity prices went back up somewhat. And here's some of our averages, and again, these fluctuate quite a bit based on markets, global markets, and I'll get into that a little bit here, petroleum prices, things like that. So cardboard, three-year average of almost $70, newsprint 51. You'll see plastic there. FY18 was almost nothing, and that was due to the lower petroleum prices. Office paper's been one of our best commodities since inception, tin, and then styrofoam. Styrofoam started out slow, but we finally found a market for that, and we're doing fairly well with that. Some of the factors affecting them prices that I mentioned, China, of course. China's implemented a couple of policies over the years, the green fence policy in 2014, where they did a lot more vetting of the materials coming in. It was like, I think they were at a 5% or somewhere in that neighborhood, 2%, I'm not sure what it was, but they really got discriminative on the type of material coming in and the contamination rate that they were allowing through. And then in 2017, they invoked the national sort policy, which reduced them numbers even greater. Now we're at about half a percent of what they allowed as for contamination rate. So as you can see, it's very important that we make sure that our commodities are high quality. When we're bailing that material, we're making sure that what goes to recycling is actually recycled. It's not getting rejected or sent off to be resorted or bailed. So that's huge for us in this community. I can't stress enough how much that really makes a program work. We're one of the few, like I said, we're one of the few communities that's able to generate a revenue off of our recycling rather than having to pay to get rid of it. Other factors affecting commodity pricing, oil prices, that's huge with plastics. Last year, oil prices were somewhat low, so plastic prices were in the dumps. Not only that, but China really put a bind on that. Now we're seeing an uptick in petroleum prices, so hopefully that's going to be good for the recycling industry. However, it won't be good for the consumer as far as the gas pumps go. So we're hoping that we can see a little bit of relief with our plastics and get a little bit more commodities out of that, or get a little bit of better pricing for our commodity out of that. Some of the issues that we face locally here, contamination is probably our biggest issue, not only cross-contamination of the recyclables, but the things that are not allowed in recycling. The industry's been, they kind of coined the phrase "wish cycling," which is when residents are trying to recycle items that aren't actually recyclable. They feel like it's recyclable, they feel like they're doing the right thing, but it's not actually a recyclable product. So we get a lot of material like that, things like TV antennas, garden hoses, as you can see porcelain items we've had. And then another big thing is unclean household recyclables, greasy pizza boxes, uncleaned peanut butter jars, things like that that really cause a lot of contamination. And if our guys see that kind of thing, they'll pull it out and take it out of our recycle stream. Here's an example of some of the things that we've pulled out of our drop site, not only our drop sites, but our main site as well. We've had cathode ray tubes, we've had grease containers, couches, chairs. One of the things that we truly believe in is keeping our sites clean, and we do that on a daily basis. We feel like if it looks like a dumpster, they're going to use it for a dumpster, and we've got proof of that. If it looks like a clean recycling site, most likely people are going to respect that and use it for a recycling site. So that's one of the goals that we have as a team, is to make sure that we're keeping them sites clean, so that discourages any contamination. Other issues that we're looking at declining revenues, I mentioned that. Most of these are more for single stream recycling. I mean, we're kind of immune to some of this, the processing, we're pretty well set in the cost that our processing takes to finalize. So unlike the single stream sort facilities, where they have to now be very careful in how they sort, they have to add more sort staff, they have to slow down the line to make sure that they're getting down to that half a percent contamination. We've pretty much had that established already, so we're kind of immune to that somewhat. And then the other thing, and again, we're somewhat immune to this, is the lack of local sort facilities. There's only one material recovery facility in the metro area that accepts single stream recycling, and you know, there's been some issues that have taken place in that facility, and we're fortunate that we've got our system set up and we're able to go mill direct with our bales. Makes a big, big difference. Moving forward, we're going to continue with our current drop site service. We want to seek out additional sites. We're very happy with the way Green Hill Village turned out, partnership with CFU on that. Like I said earlier, we're looking at an expansion of that facility. We're going to probably double that in size and send the capital improvements for FY19. We want to work closely with local businesses to serve their recycling needs. We're looking to also work closer with the Black Hawk County Solid Waste Commission if there's anything on a larger scale countywide that we can work together with in our waste reduction efforts. And seek out additional initiatives. I think we've got most of them covered at this point that are practical, but there are other things out there. There's carpet recycling, there's other types of material recycling that is available, but very difficult to manage if you don't have the facility for them. The other thing that's very important, and I think will help with our contamination, is education, and that's where the Waste Track group comes in to help us out with that. We've tried to get out articles on not only CF Cable, but in the Current's newsletter, some of what Waste Track is doing has really made an impact in terms of getting with the younger children and even adults alike in doing some of the educational programs that they do and showing how recycling actually needs to happen to make it a viable situation. So with that, before I turn it over to the Waste Track team, I'll take any questions you might have.
Yes, Mr. Heath, for the staff time that's involved and the equipment for recycling, is recycling seen as a profit generator for the city, or are we really trying to break even on it and do the public service with it?
I don't, it does not generate a profit. It covers the costs for the most part. I think we're pretty revenue neutral on that. It just depends, again, on the fluctuation in commodity pricing. We're not making 118,000 a year, that's pretty much what the operating costs are as well.
Okay. And then second question, sort of follow-up. With private services like recycle Rite and other curb side options, is that a factor in us deciding, like part of why we don't offer curb side recycling, or is that?
No, I think we actually chose this route before those businesses came online. We certainly want to partner with them in any way we can, but we feel like our big key is quality, and I think nationwide, everybody's seeing that as an issue. There's a lot of discussion out there about curb side recycling and how it's, a lot of it now is ending up in landfills. The two businesses, or now it's just one business that does curb side in the city of Cedar Falls, they started up probably five years ago now, I think, and we were well established by the time they started up.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. How much of this problem goes back to the consumer who's making the recyclables? Are they learning how to do it and how to put it in the proper buckets for us?
That's a good point, and I meant to bring that up earlier. I'm glad you mentioned that. I think some of the education needs to focus on pre-consumer and making wise choices when you go to the store to pick out what you're going to purchase, whether it's, you know, bottles of water, get it in larger containers rather than small bottles, and then use a reusable service or something like that. So things like that are huge. If you can get people thinking ahead of the game while they're out purchasing their pre-consumer goods, you're going to have a lot less post-consumer recycling to worry about.
I know some consumers who, if they happen to buy a six-pack of pop with a little plastic thing, they'll take that off and cut it up before they throw it away. So people are getting more conscientious to the problems we're having, especially with plastics and some of those.
That's good.
Mr. Reller?
Brian, you had mentioned, or I thought in your presentation, it said there were six drop-off locations. Can you go back through those? I believe Duncan-
We got UNI, by the power plant, we got Fairway, and we got Green Hill Village. Those are our three big ones. We've got one, a small one downtown on the Parkade. We got a small one at Point West, and we got a small one at Western Home Communities. And also, we have our main facility.
Okay, and then Dunkerton Road, is that not a small?
Dunkerton Road is actually a recycling site that can be considered one for Cedar Falls, however, it's run by Republic Recycling. That is actually who we contract with to take all of our baled material.
Really?
But they do have drop site out there on Dunkerton Road, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris?
Brian, thanks for your presentation. My curiosity on the asphalt recycling, I've done more roofs than I care to think about. What would disqualify the asphalt? Is it the flashing that gets mixed in, or what rejects asphalt?
Contaminated asphalt.
Contaminated?
Yeah. When we do our recycling, we accept nails, felt paper, and shingles. So we do not accept wood shake, we do not accept flashing, or any of the wrapping that the shingles come in. So for the most part, if you get your basic shingle and your nails and felt paper, that's all acceptable. The nails get sorted out in the grind process, and they get recycled as well as scrap metal.
So you're hoping the consumer bringing in the loads- So, you're hoping the consumer bringing in the loads would have the items you mentioned either not in the load or taken out?
Correct. If they have small amounts, like say, they got a lunch bag or something that, you know, they went to McDonald's for lunch and they got a little bit of residual garbage, then we'll allow that to be dumped as they're dumping their load. We got a dumpster down there for that. But, large quantities of wood shake, or like I mentioned, the wrappings of the shingles and things like that are not acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Green?
As you mentioned, asphalt recycling, and are there other kinds of recycling that you're seeing on the horizon that you'd like the city to get into if we had the funding or the equipment to do?
Well, I mentioned carpet. I think that would be, you know, carpet takes up a lot of space in a landfill. If there was a method or a way that countywide, say, that we could get something going to divert carpet from the waste stream, I think that would be a wise choice. That's probably the first, on the first and foremost. There's other smaller options out there, but that one would probably be one like asphalt shingles that's going to create a great impact on reducing the amount going in the landfill.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
One more.
Mr. Miller?
I get complaints that some of our areas that take recyclables are overfilled and people leave stuff laying around there. What do you do to handle that issue? I know there are some merchants that are allowing us to do it, but get very upset if it's not being kept clean. Do we make more trips there to pick it up if it's being used more?
Yeah, and we're very conscientious of that. We're very grateful for Fairway, for example, is our largest private property that we're on, and we do send extra help up there if need be. We watch it very closely after long weekends, if there's a holiday weekend, for example, or, you know, just a regular weekend. We're up there, first thing Monday morning, to take care of whatever might be either overfilled or that was dumped or that shouldn't have been.
Thank you.
Other questions?
With that, I will turn the mic over to Tammy Turner and Lindsay Anderson from Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission. They are our Waste Track Education Team, and I'll stress again the importance of having these ladies in our facility down at 1500 Bluff, that's where their office is. It's been a win-win situation for both the Solid Waste Commission as well as the city. They're able to provide tours right off-site there, and a lot of good programs right in the office area for children and adults alike. So, I'll turn it over to Lindsay and Tammy.
Thanks, Brian, for the work you and your team do.
All right. Yeah, so our Waste Track Education Team, I'll step back for a moment and say that Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission is a five-person board. You might recognize one of the faces on the board here, Chairperson Brian Heath. This five-person board represents the cities and the county in Blackhawk County as far as their different positions. So, we have Cedar Falls Public Works, Waterloo Public Works, Waterloo City Councilmember, a representative of the other smaller communities, as well as the county as a whole and the rural areas. They meet the fourth Thursday of every month, except for November and December, they meet the third week, just to kind of avoid those holidays. Their public meetings are open, and they're always welcome to see public coming in if you have any questions or want to just come see how their meetings go. And, very fascinating on all the engineering that goes on at the landfill when you go to those meetings. They employ the landfill administrator, who is their only non-contracted employee. They oversee the Subtitle D permitted Blackhawk County sanitary landfill. Their daily operations are contracted out through a private company, and they do not haul any types of materials to the landfill. That is all done by each of the nine individual cities that have their own program for their own residents, as well as private businesses that haul to the landfill. They encourage the proper disposal of household hazardous materials and the residential recycling of electronics. They fund our two-person Waste Track Education Team, and all programs and services are paid through the tipping fees at the landfill, and no tax dollars are used for these services. Our Waste Track Education Team is a partnership between the County Solid Waste Management Commission and the Blackhawk County Conservation Board. As Brian mentioned, our education office is located at 1500 Bluff Street, just kind of behind the recycling center and the transfer station. We have hours by appointment. A lot of times, we are out in the community, visiting schools and taking groups on tours and doing lots of visits places. But, feel free to stop in if you see our sign open, we'd love to have a chat with you. The building itself is the old Public Works building, prior to moving out to Technology Parkway, where a lot of the Public Works administrative offices were held. This building is perfect for us, and we really appreciate the partnership with the city of Cedar Falls, being able to have this space. It's a great space for our education program. It allows us office space, ample storage for our wide variety of programs that we offer. There's also a small onsite area. We've had scout groups and adult groups come and do an education program with us and walk up and take a tour at the transfer station, and people are really excited to be able to see behind the scenes of your recycling center, how that all operation works there. It's also very conveniently located for us. The majority of what we do is off-site outreach, so it's nice, convenient to hop on the highway and be able to get going where we need to go. So, we appreciate that partnership. Thank you very much. Our education team, we work, we focus on residents. So, we have a hotline where we're answering questions, anything from can this go in the recycling center, how do I prepare this plastic before I take it there, what do I do with Styrofoam, is there an outlet for cooking oil, those types of questions. We can direct them to the proper way to handle those materials. We have different newsletters and brochures that we put out. Beginning of the year, we did this Waste Commission Connection Newsletter. You might have seen that go out through a wide variety of local papers. We've also, in the last year, drastically updated the commission's website, so it is now mobile-friendly. It has a lot of features that are a little bit easier to use than the previous website that we had. There's a search feature that you can kind of type in what you're looking for. We also have a frequently asked questions list that has ways to manage more than 70 different types of materials, too. So, at a glance, you can kind of scroll down and say, what do I do with these old holiday lights that you have that are burnt out? And then, there's also an easy contact us form, too. So, if you have questions and you're not able to locate it on the website, you can kind of just contact Tammy or I, and it's really easy to find out how to get ahold of us there, and we can be happy to help you out with your questions. We also have a Facebook page and a YouTube page and a Pinterest page, if you just search Waste Track Education Team. We have lots of fun stuff that we can share on those social media pages as well. And then, we coordinate and publicize the twice-year commission sponsor drop-off events for people to properly manage their household hazardous materials and their electronics. And, the next event is coming up on Saturday, September 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the Public Works Complex out on Technology Parkway. We really appreciate the partnership, being able to work with the city and use that facility as well. It is a great setup for the flow of traffic going through there. We get anywhere from 600 to 1,000 cars, depending on the event and what people have to get rid of, and so, it's a nice, easy flow of traffic through that venue. All those materials that are collected at that event are paid for by the County Solid Waste Management Commission. And they also offer an event in the spring as well, and they partner with the city of Waterloo for that event. But, both of those events are open to Blackhawk County residents for a wide variety of materials. We have that listed on our website as well. I'm going to actually pass the floor now to Tammy.
All right, and a lot of it couldn't be done without the power of volunteers, so we want to kind of thank anybody who's been a volunteer in the past. Obviously, two people can't unload tons of TVs and process, like Lindsay said, 600 to 1,000 cars in just a five-hour event. So, we wanted to kind of like showcase some of our volunteers, all the work that they do, as easy as doing traffic, surveying, a lot of our college students, it is the heavy lifting that they're doing. So, we appreciate all their help. But, we do feed them well, so if you know of any groups that are out there and they're looking for some volunteer opportunities, we will need them the end of September for that event. So, just to give you guys an idea of the scale, usually, it's over 100 pallets of electronics that we collect at every single event. Here's kind of some tonnage. We've been as low as 25 tons, as high as 41 tons of the old electronics. So, think about the old TVs with the big bump in the back, the old, you know, computers, and a lot of the small devices that people have in their homes now, too. So, it's a huge amount of material that we get twice a year. So, just a little bit of information for you guys, this is a little bit of an education as well. We all make garbage, so we're all part of the problem, we're all part of the solution as well. The landfill does receive 200 to 300 garbage trucks daily, some as small as just maybe a pickup load, some as large as a semi bringing materials. So, a lot of times, people will say, well, the best way to figure out how to do garbage education is to know what is actually in the garbage. So, the Iowa DNR does sponsor a waste characterization study every five to seven years, kind of depends on their funding. And last summer, they were actually able to do research here in Cedar Falls. So, Cedar Falls Public Works signed up, said, yes, come sort our garbage. It was in a bay right down from Lindsay and I, so we went down one day and took some fragrant pictures. So, they did kind of take samples, look at the garbage, here's some of the results, and you can kind of see how it compares to past years. So, they did it in 2005, 2011, and then repeated it in 2017. And then, this is going to change some of how we do our education. So, we're not going to focus on, you know, diapers that are less than 2% when paper and cardboard is still a huge amount of our waste stream. So, paper, which includes cardboard magazines, office paper, is still 25% of what we're throwing away in Iowa landfills. So, this chart is Iowa, but if you want to know the Cedar Falls specific numbers, Brian would have that. And then, if you kind of see the asterisk on food waste, food waste is now the number two thing that we throw away in Iowa, if we include both the loose and the packaged food waste. So, some of it's brand-new food, it's still in the can, still in a bag, still in a carton, and we're throwing it away. And then, some of the food waste is going to be stuff like watermelon rinds, banana peels, things like that. So, when you put those two categories together, it was right around 20%. So, it beat out plastic this last study. So, that tells us as a solid waste agency, we want to kind of up how much we're talking about backyard composting, see if there's any programs out there to kind of do industrial composting. So, some of you may have seen, like, some of the Hy-Vee stores are already doing it. So, if you see a Hy-Vee store and they've got the orange dumpster outside, they're working with a company called Green RU, and they are doing a lot of composting of all the organic materials that are in the store. So, there's possibilities that are out there to kind of look at this. And so, construction demolition, Cedar Falls numbers are a lot lower than that because they're taking the shingles out of the waste stream. So, that's where Cedar Falls excels, maybe compared to other municipalities. So, if you ever wanted to learn more about garbage research, it's on the Iowa DNR website. I would say, most of the time, our events are just two times a year, but most of the time, what we do is visit schools, do outreach. All of our programs are free, they're subsidized through the Solid Waste Commission, so there's any groups out there, scouts, 4-H, any school groups, we can go anywhere in Blackhawk County and do all of our programs for free. So, sometimes, it might be at the libraries. Today, we are doing a bunch of stuff with summer camps, Bible school, daycare centers, stuff like that. So, we can do anything on the topic that has to do with waste diversions, one might be recycling, composting, reusing. We do litter cleanups, there's a whole variety of things that we do. Last calendar year, we did 335 programs for nearly 7,000 people. And then, we also do tours as well, so we can do landfill tours, kind of take some kids on behind-the-scenes tours, so they get to see, you know, the garbage truck, get to see the compactor out of the landfill. And we also have been partnering, kind of coordinate with Doyle and kind of say, hey, we've got a group that wants to come. We had AmeriCorps last week that went down to the recycling center. They got to see the densifier, the baled materials, talked about markets. So, that's been kind of nice to be able to have a facility where we can kind of do behind-the-scenes tours for groups. We also do an event recycling loan program. Some of you who went to Sturgis Falls may have seen them near the Ice House Museum. They're also going to be at Irish Fest coming up, so we have this equipment. We would like it not to be in storage, we would like it to be out in the community, being used at like live to night, they use the equipment. But, if there's other events, like 5K runs, if there's school carnivals, even if somebody is having a large wedding and they want to have recycling containers at their facility, they can borrow those. We rent them out for free, we provide the bags for free, we just ask for an equipment deposit, just so we get our stuff back. And then, I'll open it up if anybody has any questions about anything. And if anybody ever wants a landfill tour, or as a council, you want to come out for a landfill tour, we welcome you to come out and see it for yourself.
Any questions? Mr. Cruz?
I'm curious on the electronics recycling, is there a tipping charge when you bring it to the two events?
When we have the two events, we do limit it, so each vehicle that comes through, they can have two cathode ray-containing electronics, and after that, they have to pay $5 per CRT. So, if you pull up and you've got three old-school TVs, the first two would be free, and then you would have to pay $5 for that third one. So, we do put a limit on that, so we're subsidizing the event.
So, then, during the rest of the year, they have a drop-off at the main site?
They would go to, yeah, Cedar Falls, to the transfer station, and then they have a separate area where they're doing the electronics recycling.
And is there a fee there for that?
Yeah.
There is a fee?
Yeah. Five dollars. Yeah, during the rest of the year. And then, people do have the option, there are electronics companies out there that are also doing it, but I know their fees are a little bit more, I know Best Buy still does it, there's a few other places that do it as well.
You're looking for volunteers, would you go over again how they can get in touch with you?
Sure. Our phone number is 266-8722. On our website, it has my contact, and I'm the volunteer coordinator for that event. They do need to be 18 years old or older, and then, if they just want to specify, do they want a heavy task, do they want to lift TVs all day, or do they want a lighter task like surveying or helping us with traffic?
One more time on the number, real slow.
Oh, 266-8722.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your time tonight.
I just have one question for any of you. A lot of communities have passed ordinances restricting plastic bags. Do you have any information on the effectiveness of that, or is it just a feel-good activity? I mean, does it really make a difference? I suppose of every community, that it would make a difference, but do you have any data on the effectiveness of that?
Certain cities have tried to do it. I know Iowa City had attempted to do something like that. Some of it is just like consumer choice, so like if you want to go to the grocery store and that's the bag that you choose, just realize that it really does need to get recycled. It doesn't really have a place, you know, in the landfill. But, some cities, when they do have the other style of recycling, and it goes to the equipment with conveyor belts, that's why most cities don't want the plastic bags, because it tears up their equipment. So, that's why it's nice that Cedar Falls has like this separate chute for it, so that way, it's contained and it's not, yeah, getting into any equipment where it could cause damage.
I can comment on that. We still take grocery bags, the plastic grocery bags, and as Tammy mentioned, we collect them separately, we bail that, just like we would our normal plastics. There's no commodity pricing or there's no commodity for that, we just simply do that. It does get recycled, however, it's a very low grade of recyclable material. As Tammy mentioned, Iowa City has now banned plastic bags from their recycling program, and several cities have done that throughout the United States.
Don't some cities ban them from even being in stores?
Yeah, now, that, I'm not sure. I would say if they want to have a ban in their city, then they probably better ban them from their stores.
Right, right. That's kind of what I was curious of, if it made a difference, if there's any data out there that said it's, you see articles every day about plastic bags in the ocean, and we really do have to be more purposeful about that kind of thing, so. But, thanks for everything you guys are doing, all of you.
Mr. Miller?
One more question for you, Brian. What kind of criteria are you looking at for future drop-off sites?
We try to model our sites as a destination. Fairway's a great example of a destination site. It's where residents can make one trip. If they're going to get pre-consumer goods, they can drop off their post-consumer goods at the same time. Walmart was a great example. We had Walmart for several years, and it was a large We had Walmart for several years and it was, that was a large generator of recyclables. And people use that. They go to the store to get groceries and then drop off the recyclables at the same time. So anywhere we can find destination areas is kind of what we're looking for.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and Tammy, Lindsay as well. Our next item on the agenda is a review of our floodplain ordinance. And we have city planner David Sturridge.
All right, here I'm here today just to present some ordinance changes, potential ordinance changes to our floodplain section in the zoning ordinance. Basically, this started out back, it was a year ago roughly, last summer when the DNR staff scheduled a community assistance visit with our staff, the planning, planning staff, who back then was Bob Seymour and myself. We sat down with Bill Capuccio. He's the state floodplain coordinator. And they're there to provide guidance and support in any, you know, any questions. They review our policies, our programs, our ordinances, and our permits. And as a result of that visit, we were placed in good standings with a national floodplain insurance program. So what does that mean? It's either you're in, got different grades. So you're in good standings with the program, you're on, you're suspended, or you're placed on probation. So Cedar Falls is in good standing. If you're placed on probation, DNR, FEMA, they give you guidelines. Hey, you gotta, you gotta correct these issues by a certain time period. If you're suspended, you're off the program for, could be a number of years based on what you do. And if you're suspended or on the, off the program, basically it's just, it takes away your eligibility for future funding for federal aid, disaster aid, flood aid, and that type of thing. Also gets rid of all the policies that the city and all our citizens carry for flood insurance. So it's good to stay in good standings with FEMA as we enforce our codes and ordinances and develop these, these new policies here that I want to go through. And basically, we're looking at just some updated definitions that has come down from FEMA, some performance standards for detached structures. And we do have those standards in our current code. But we're going to add some little additions that anything below that base flood elevation should be constructed with flood-resistant materials. And what that is, is that lower portion of the garage could be built with block or steel or even wood. Wood is a flood-resistant material. It just has to be open and able to dry out. So like drywall would be something that you don't want to build below that base flood elevation in a detached structure. So that's another example, what we want to change for our performance standards. Again, they're constructed to be, to store for low-damage materials and also prevent that collapse or lateral movement for those structures. So that's, that's part of the performance standards for detached structures. And then in another section, in the utilities section on our stormwater management program, we just want to correspond to what we're doing in the zoning ordinance to that chapter. And that relates to what the base flood elevation is. Finally, our community rating systems program is, is a, is something that the National Flood Insurance Program created a few years back. We entered that program in 2013. And what that does is give us a rating on what we do for floodplain management, what our policies are, what our regulations are. And they give us a grade on that. And that carries out to each individual policy owner that they can have their little rebate on their insurance premiums. So that is not just the zoning ordinance, but it's something that, what we do for preparedness and assistance, what MOP does to get ready for a flood, how we, how we get the word out something's coming and how we monitor those, those different events. So it's programs and policies that we, it's spread out across all divisions in the city. And then again, we're based on that, that rating on that. So just moving along with some of these definitions I want to throw out, that's part of this process, and pertinent structure, and that's just a detached structure. That's not, it's on the same lot as a principal, principal structure. So that's FEMA's definition of that garage or detached garage. Base flood elevation is, is what that is, is what the elevation of the floodwaters and how it's identified on the, on the map. And it calls out 100-year, 500-year elevations. And it basically tells staff and how we write permits of where to set those, those buildings in any new project that's coming along. Factory-built home parks or subdivisions or just mobile home parks. Highest adjacent grade is that area around the house, base of the footprint, which is the highest grade. There is lowest grade that we record when a project comes in for permits. Repetitive loss is something that I've been asked a while for. Basically, it, it, it provides accumulation for damage during a flood event. So right now, we look at if, if a, if a structure is damaged, is it less than 50% the value, which is a minor damage? If it's more than 50%, it's substantial damage. And that's where, that's where, when it's exceeding that 50% rule, you have to meet the current standards of the, of the ordinance. So for the most part, it's elevating the structure. Good and bad things about that. The good thing is if you're eligible to elevate, well, if you're required to elevate, you're eligible to receive ICC funds through FEMA, which is a $30,000 fund to elevate that structure. And then with the repetitive loss, we, we can kind of accumulate those losses over a 10-year period for multiple events, if you follow that. So I've got a lot of questions about, well, I wasn't damaged this, this last flood, but am I eligible for ICC funds? Well, technically, they're not because they're not over that 50% rule. This will help them get those funds to elevate their house because that's basically the overall goal of this, is to get those properties elevated, protected. It adds value to our CRS program. And it is a goal to us is to remove those repetitive loss properties.
Mr. Sturridge, the 50% of market value, is that assessed, the county assessment value?
You assess, assess value on that.
Thank you.
That's been a policy since 2000.
David, quick, oh, quick question. I noticed the 50% figure there doesn't match. It appears the repetitive loss definition in the red says 25% of market value. Is that a typo on page 45?
It's, yeah, that's typo. So in red, it's, it is 50%. Because 50% is our definition of the substantial damage.
Okay.
So when it's substantially damaged, that's 50% of the value. So if your house is 50,000 and your loss is more than 25,000, that's a substantial correction.
If I may. So that's coming from FEMA, correct? The repetitive loss side of that, where you can use multiple events?
Yeah, that, that is the definition from FEMA to create that repetitive loss tabulation or, or you can, you can add multiple events over a 10-year period to create that.
Specifically to qualify for ICC?
Yes, that's, that's.
Other questions?
Is 30K enough to handle the cost of the elevation for most of these homes? For most of the homes that are, that would be affected, would 30K be enough to cover? Or is that it?
Well, a lot of times when a house, when someone wants to come in and elevate it, we're only talking four or five feet. So three or four course roll blocks. So it, it covers that, probably not all of it, but it's, it's a good chunk of that, that permit provision.
That's fair. I mean, you've got electrical to consider. You've got plumbing that's got to be modified. But 30,000 is pretty substantial for most people.
Okay, then moving along with another definition. Start of construction really corresponds to when a, when a house or when a permit is issued or when a development begins. It, it, it basically reflects what it says on the map, what the base flood elevation is on the map, what zone you're in, if the maps are changed. Of course, they're updated all the time. We've had updates in 2011. We're looking at in the next couple of years, new updates here. But it just corresponds to what the map says at that time when, when the permit is issued. So we talk about pre-firm map, pre-firm properties or post-firm properties. And the firm is federal insurance rate map. So if your house has been built, you know, in the 50s, it's a pre-firm structure since it was, the maps weren't out then. So if it's built after, you just have to meet those requirements of, of the map, the base flood elevation, and what's on the zone. And again, it, it's part of that issuance when we do those permits for a project.
Does that have to do with when the city started being involved in the flood insurance program? Or is that all based on the map?
It's based on the map. And so if the map changes, any new project after that has to meet the court, the requirements of the map.
So when did that, so what's a, when was the first map?
We had maps back in the 70s. And then we had one in 85.
I thought the 80s was what?
Yeah, 85 and then 2011 was our recent map.
Sure.
So again, the maps kind of change over the years. And, and as those projects continue, they just have to meet those.
Do we adopt those as soon as they come out from FEMA?
Yeah, once, I mean, there's, the map process is they, they provide staff with some initial feedback. It goes out to the public for comments. And then eventually, the maps are, are finalized and then adopted by, by ordinance. And so kind of introduce this, these ordinance amendments to Plains Zoning Commission. And we'd like to move this forward to council as a, as an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Sturridge. Questions from council? Staff has requested a motion to direct staff to move forward in drafting an ordinance for the proposed floodplain amendments.
Second?
Motion in seconded. Last-minute discussion from council.
If I may. Regarding detached garages, using floodable materials, is this going to imply that somebody can't sheet rock a garage that's below that base?
Well, flood-resistant materials are, the, the building code has a list of those. Insulation, sheet rock isn't flood-resistant materials. But it's, it's just the process of cleaning that up, getting it out and airing it, airing it out. So when your, your sheet rock is damaged, you know, that's, that's going to be, that's going to be thrown away. Just talked about recycling and so. But like I said, wood is a flood-resistant material as long as you open it up, let it breathe and dry.
So as far as finishing a detached structure, that, this is going to change that for?
Well, it's, it's been, it's always been in the building code. It's just adding this to the zoning code for, for that portion below the, below that BFE, base flood elevation. So it's trying to get that consistency across the codes as it, as it relates to development, new permits. And like I said, the, the building codes has a list of materials that's permitted, not permitted, and that kind of thing.
So people are going to have to make some adjustments. So rather than use sheet rock, you use an OSB or something along those lines.
Yeah, there could be some different type of material than sheet rock that's eligible.
Other questions from council?
Just correcting the typo.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sturridge. Have a motion in second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our last item on the agenda is bills and payroll. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve two payrolls and bills.
Thank you.
Second?
Second, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. That concludes our Cedar Falls City Council Committee of the Whole. Thank you. And our regular meeting will start at the top of the hour, 7 o'clock. Have a great evening.